Good evening. We're going to ask the board members to take their seats. Stand and take your seats.
I can't hear you, Nancy.
Yeah.
Thanks, Terry. Can you hear me now? Good evening. Let's start with the call to order. And we'll...
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Christopher Espinoza.
Here.
Cheryl Fuller.
Here.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Here.
Terry Pavisic.
Here.
Nancy Kupka.
Here.
Scarlett O'Hara.
Here.
Jay Tulladano.
Here.
We have a form. Let's stand for the pledge.
The pledge of the evening is to testify that the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, anyone who wishes to speak, your form can come up front. We're taking, we're going to take people in the order in which they come. And Mrs. Nydek, she's a little obscured by the screen, but she's over here.
I'm not hard to hear you again, Nancy.
Oh, okay.
You're really... Microphone.
We're on it.
If you wish to speak and you've completed your form, Mrs. Nydek is sitting up here. You can bring your form up at any time. We're going to start with the approval of minutes. The first thing I need is the Board of Education to approve the minutes of the June 21 business meeting, the June 21 close meeting, and the July... Okay. We need a mo...
So moved. For some reason, mine is really loud.
Second.
Well, I think I have to reread the motion.
Reread the motion.
Okay, all right.
We need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the minutes from the June 21 2021 business meeting, the June 21 2021 close meeting, and the July 12 2021 close meeting. Terry, you moved?
Yes.
And Cheryl, you seconded? Somebody seconded?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye. The minutes are approved. Before we move into the reception of visitors, on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to review refinements to the reception of visitors that we have instituted and briefly address the topic of equity and inclusion at District 99. Because we anticipated a large number of visitors wishing to speak to the board today, we will be bringing speakers to the microphone to speak on a first come, first served basis. Therefore, we ask that you complete a speaker slip and submit it to Mrs. Nydek, our Board Secretary, if you haven't done so already. The reception of visitors occurs in two stages. The first, at the start of the meeting, which will be next, actually, you are invited to comment on anything the board is voting on tonight. Tonight, there are two agenda items: the approval of the 2021-2022 district goals and the approval of discipline code revisions and changes. Discipline code revision?
Just keep going, Nancy. Nancy, just keep going.
Okay. Okay, if people can remain quiet, I will speak louder. Tonight, there are two agenda items: the approval of the 2021-2022 district goals and the approval of the discipline code revisions and changes to the Student Parent Handbook and Athletic Activities Handbook. Comment is limited to 20 minutes with no more than three minutes per speaker. Later in the evening, there will be an opportunity to address the board on anything concerning District 99. For tonight, I will expand public comment during the second reception of visitors to a total of 60 minutes with a limit of 20 minutes per topic and, again, no more than three minutes per speaker. If you do not get to speak or you run out of time, you can submit your comments in writing to the board. It is the expectation that audience members, not at the microphone, listen respectfully. In the event that those speaking or those in the audience fail to comply with these guidelines or there are interruptions to the business of the boards, such as shouting during the meeting, I will, for the safety of all, close the second reception of visitors portion of the evening and move into closed session to discuss an employment matter, after which no action will be taken tonight by the board. As for equity and inclusion at District 99, as we recently shared with students and families for nearly a decade, we have been committed to equity work. It is not new to District 99. Regardless of a person's race, color, national origin, sex, or ability, we are always seeking to understand the unique ideas and perspectives that each person offers. Before we can teach or encourage any student, we first must show that we value who they are. This instills a sense of belonging. By adopting this mindset, we are better able to provide students what they need to learn and grow and become productive members of society. We want to foster a more positive and encouraging environment for all of our students inside our schools. We do this in part by teaching accurate history and also giving students the ability to freely discuss current events. After all, our students must first understand current society in order to work to improve it. I also want to emphasize that the district has always and will always teach students how to think critically, not what to think. Remember, schools are just one source of information for students to consider. We hope that our community, including every person sitting in this room and those watching remotely, will be willing to learn, understand, and support this work. It's pretty simple. It's about caring, accepting, and respecting all of our students and one another. The ultimate goal is that every student is able to develop into their greatest potential and that our schools and community were key parts in supporting their accomplishment. I also encourage you to visit and read the district website for more information. Last fall, the district posted the 100-page-plus Equity Audit Report. It details the district's progress and challenges ahead. Soon, the district, with the help of the community, will begin creating a new strategic plan, which will greatly influence our future plans related to equity. Even though we will not be entertaining comments, excuse me, even though we will not be entertaining comments about critical race theory until the second reception of visitors, I want to be very clear about some misinformation that I heard in past receptions of visitors and that I have read from the letters sent to the board. To be clear, District 99 does not know, nor has it ever, taught critical race theory. Community High School District 99 does not now, nor has it ever, taught that all white people are systematically racist or that all of our institutions are systematically racist. Community High School District 99 does not now, nor has it ever, taught that people are oppressors based on the color of their skin. CHSD 99 does not now, nor has it ever, pushed a divisive narrative to our students and staff. This is misinformation and counter to our missions and goals. Thank you in advance for being respectful of our process and during our meetings. So we are now going to move into the reception of, the first reception of visitors. And again, this meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. This first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. And those agenda items are on the screen.
I've received no comment slips for the first reception of visitors.
Okay. Is there anybody who wishes to... Oh, we, so we have nothing?
We have nothing.
We have nothing? Okay. So we will move then on into the recommendations and reports of the superintendent. Thank you.
Good evening, Board.
Hello.
Welcome back. This evening, we'll get into the return-to-in-person instruction plan as it has developed. As it is... As it has developed over the last couple of weeks, as the CDC has released its guidelines and as we have communicated with our students, family, and staff. Really, there's three key goals based on this recent guidance that was released. The first is to return safely to in-person instruction for all students. Second, the goal is to return to as close to a normal school year as possible while following all of the CDC, IDPH, ISB, and DuPage County Health Department guidelines. That has been our goal since all of this started. That has not changed. Neither of those two goals have changed. Those two have been our goals since this all started. Three is now that we're able to start limiting some of the mitigations that apply holistically to all students here at school under the new guidelines. That's what's changed since those guidelines were released. As the CDC has said, returning students to in-person learning is a priority. That has been a priority of ours since this started. That has not changed. We will continue to promote opportunities for everybody to be vaccinated that wishes to. And we have run vaccination clinics since it became available. We'll continue running those. We ran one last week. We have another one the first week of August. For anybody that wishes to participate in that, we're just trying to help contribute to the county's resources of those that wish to be vaccinated. We'll continue to maintain all of our safety measures, including the practices around ventilation, hand washing, respiratory etiquette, all of those things that are in place. That, when we talk about holistic interventions, those are the ones we're talking about. And as you'll continue to hear tonight, Board, we're going to probably have to continue to change and respond as conditions change, whether that be guidelines that are issued from the health agencies, whether that be changes in the rate of the virus spreading within our community or within our own schools. There may have to be changes as the school year goes on. The other thing that's happening is research is being, you know, advanced, and all of those things could lead to guidelines changing. But just as we've done for the past 18 months, we'll continue to follow those guidelines as required. The other thing that the board is well aware of, as we've brought to you in drips and drabs over the last year, is a great deal of additional support, both in the form of academic and social emotional support. That will be there as we know many students are returning from the traumatic experience of a pandemic. Some might be behind in their studies. Some might have gaps that we need to close. So we will have additional supports in place to assist with that. The goal is as normal of a school year as possible, as normal is in these times where COVID is still present in the community. This will include what we've seen before the pandemic, an eight-period day with lunch. However, due to our new commons expansion, that lunch will be expanded for many students to be a full-period lunch. We'll resume the late-start Monday schedules as we had pre-pandemic. We're trying to get back as close to that pre-pandemic state as possible. All activities and athletics return in person with spectators. And remote learning that we experienced last year will not be continued. The goal is everybody's back in person. Those students that have a medical concern, documented medical concern, we have students with documented medical concerns every year, and we have a process for responding for individual student needs as a result of those. As I said, we're trying to limit the mitigations that apply holistically to all students. Things like screening testing, that's students screening themselves at home, staff screening themselves at home will be in effect. Students that present symptoms here at school, we will offer their families the opportunity for them to get a Binax Now test here at school administered by our nursing staff or provide them the resources in the community where they could go do that on their own. We'll continue, as I said, our increased ventilation throughout the buildings, hand washing, respiratory etiquette. The key piece that you're going to continue to hear from now until school starts and thereafter is the strong encouragement that anybody who is sick, who is showing symptoms, needs to stay home. They must stay home. That's, we keep COVID out of the buildings. We keep it from spreading. We will contact trace in combination with quarantine and isolation where appropriate, and we'll continue the deep cleaning process of our buildings each night. Other things that I haven't covered here is CDC continues to tell us that vaccination is the number-one way to prevent COVID from spreading and that we want to try to maintain social distancing as much as possible. We will say over and over again throughout the start of this year to keep everybody at arm's length, you know, maintain that three feet of distance. That's about an arm's length. And if everybody just kind of keeps that in mind, that will help us maintain that protocol of social distancing. Indoor mask wearing is recommended to those that are not fully vaccinated. However, those that are fully vaccinated may choose to wear a mask, as continue to if they'd like to. People have the option to do that. However, the key here is that people follow as many of these protocols as the CDC recommends that they do because we need to keep COVID from spreading at school. If COVID begins to spread at our school or within our community, the health agencies, the CDC, IDPH, ISB, DuPage County Health Department, any of those organizations that provide guidance to us could adapt that guidance, whether it be for the nation, the state, our community, our specific schools, and even programs within our schools, and could cause changes to happen throughout the year. So the more that we can, you know, that's why it starts with, it starts with, "If you're sick, stay home. If you want to, if you can, get vaccinated." Any of those things that can prevent the spread will make it so that we can be more normal than we were in the past. There are some key differences in the CDC guidance. Remember, this isn't District 99 rules. These aren't Hanks' rules. This is what's presented by the CDC. So one of the key things, as you read that guidance, is you'll see last year it was holistic mitigations. Everybody had to have the same set of mitigations to try to prevent COVID from coming in. So everybody got the same treatment, right? This year, the CDC has outlined different conditions, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. We aren't checking people at the door. We aren't, there's no way for us to enforce these differences. These are things where we have to trust our community and our students to take the right and proper actions to protect themselves and to protect the school community. So what the CDC outlines is families have some choices as to what they would like to do to limit the risks of COVID to their children, to their families, and to our community. And that first choice at the high school level is vaccination. And there's pros and cons with all of this, right? If you choose to get vaccinated, you're taking on some established risks that come with vaccination. But with that trade-off, you get a nearly normal return to school and to society. Mask wearing is optional, as outlined by the CDC, and there are no quarantine or close-contact protocols for someone that is vaccinated. On the other hand, if you're choosing not to get vaccinated, obviously, you're avoiding any risks that could come with a vaccine. But in exchange for that, the CDC then outlines that you're accepting an increased risk that's associated with getting COVID. But you're also have the recommendation that you wear masks in public and at school. And you also have a set of quarantine and close-contact rules outlined by the CDC that are different for those that are unvaccinated, that then we are required to follow and will follow through our nursing department and through our administration. We're still waiting to hear about what the duration of quarantine definitely is. The local health department determines that. But they're indicating it will be the 10-day quarantine period. But we don't have a definitive answer in writing on that yet. That's what we're still, one of the pieces we're still waiting for. We still have several, like, fine details like that that we're waiting for, but we felt it was important as people are getting ready to register for school and everything for us to give them everything that we know at this point. So this is the overview slide. So some key things we've talked about: returning to traditional eight-period day with lunch. We'll have our new, larger commons space that allows for a full-period lunch. But we also have some new additional outdoor eating space for those that aren't comfortable eating indoors could then transition outside and eat there. We're also modifying the first day back. Traditionally, we had just ninth graders attend in the afternoon. Everybody else came to start the day. But we know that many of our sophomores weren't even on campus last year, our 10th graders. And last year was a disruptive year. So we have a lot of just resources to explain to kids, reestablish them back into how the school's going to function. There's a whole different layout on both sides of town. So we're changing up the schedule a little bit, and we'll send that out. We're still tweaking it and working on it. But we will have grades 11 and 12 come in the morning. There'll be a separate presentation for each class to cover those general school supports and reintroduce them back and welcome them back to school with some surprises and fun stuff along the way. And then they'll go through a shortened bell schedule so they get to, it's kind of like meet your teacher, get your syllabus, get your school supply list, all of those kinds of things. And then they'll head home for the afternoon, and then we'll bring in 9 and 10 to do a similar type day with them in the afternoon. Yeah, Mike?
Yeah. We still have Mad Dash, right, for freshmen coming in?
Yeah. And then the corresponding program at North, so... And we're also doing separate tours for ninth graders and 10th graders so that they can come through both schools before all of this starts and find, you know, their locker and their classrooms and all of those things. Because we, you know, we know there are several hundred students that were not on campus at all last year. Other things to review: stay home when sick. Staff, students, everybody, stay home when sick. We'll continue to promote opportunities throughout the community and offer opportunities for those that wish to be vaccinated to be vaccinated. Mask wearing continues to be recommended for those unvaccinated and optional for all as a preventative practice. Per the CDC, though, mask wearing is a requirement on all school transportation. So that includes all school buses, driver's ed vehicles, activity, athletics. Anytime that a student is on a bus or a school vehicle, mask wearing is required per the CDC. We're, as I said, maintain a distance of three feet as much as possible. Keep that arm's length away from everybody. But due to the layered mitigation factors that we have: ventilation, hand washing, a low rate of COVID in our community, all of these practices that we have in place, we will put contact tracing at three feet, and that only applies to those that are unvaccinated per the CDC. So contact tracing and quarantine. As I said, we're still waiting to find out the duration of quarantine. And then, as I said at the beginning, I'm going to say it now and I'm going to keep saying it. We're going to keep doing everything that we've done for the past 18 months, which is following the guidelines of the health experts. I'm not a health expert. I'm an educational expert. I need to take the advice and the guidance and the mandates that come, and they're kind of all the same thing when we talk about the CDC, IDPH, ISB, and DuPage County Health Department. We'll continue to follow that guidance. That guidance has shifted greatly this summer in comparison to last summer, and we're responding to that. However, changes in that guidance, changes in the rate of illness at school or in the community could cause changes as we move forward. And we'll communicate that to the board, to the public, if and when those things should happen, whether it loosens restrictions or increases restrictions or makes any kind of changes in the way we do business. We'll continue to communicate that. And that kind of just lays in those unknowns, right, what I just said. And key pieces in that are the impact on vaccines in our community. We know that 50% of 12- to 17-year-olds in DuPage County have been vaccinated, about 50% there. We know that there's variants that are propagating throughout the country and the world that could impact what happens. We know that there's research going on that could impact what the guidelines are for us moving forward. So that's the plan as of this point. We'll keep, we'll update the board again on August 2. At that point, if it looks like nothing has changed greatly, I may ask the board to take a resolution like they did last year, just saying we'll continue to follow the guidelines. If it looks like we're still getting some fine details and adjustment, we'll put off that change, that resolution until August 16, when we know truly what the board is signing off on for the year. But up until that point, we'll continue to follow the guidelines as presented, as the board has expected us to as the administration since this all started. So with that all being said, questions from the board? Or our students?
Hearing none, District 11.
All right. District goals have been presented to the board. Oh, this is the timeline I just told you. All right. District goals is an action item tonight. These have come to the board many times before this evening. The board has had an opportunity to comment, provide feedback, offer changes. They have adapted and changed. They haven't changed since we looked at them at the last board meeting. So tonight, this is like the second reading, right? This is the time where it's up for the board to approve later on tonight. At this point, are there any questions regarding those goals as presented? Hearing none? Handbook revisions are also up for approval tonight. A reminder that student handbook becomes board policy once it's approved. There's a couple of just small changes that are outlined in your board packet tonight. One is something that we've been working on through our common experience for the past several years, which is how we'll respond and teach about academic dishonesty, especially, you know, as students work through here. This is their chance to learn about that. If they end up ever in their lifetime in a post-secondary setting, academic dishonesty is treated much differently. So we want to make sure that students are prepared for whatever comes next, whenever that may come. So there's a small change there to respond to those changes. And then the next thing is, last year, we did a large addendum in responding to COVID related to all of those safety protocols that the state released last June, July, August, and September. We're recommending that all of those be removed now as we're returning to a normal setting. So that is an action item later this evening as well. Scott is here to help answer any details regarding those questions, if you have them. Yeah, let's go. I think that's got to get turned on.
Yeah.
Okay, can you hear me better? We're recommending no changes to the athletic and activities handbook as well, so...
We are not making any changes to the athletic or activity handbook. Typically, at this board meeting, we would recommend those changes as well. Are there any other questions?
Asked and answered.
All right. End of the year financial report. I'm going to turn this over to Mark.
Next slide. Yeah, one is going to... Yeah, I'm just going to do a 30,000-foot review of this. I gave you the memo on this. I hope you had an opportunity to review it. From a big picture, we started with $2.3 million in our total operating fund balances. We started with $2.3 million of fund balance in our operating fund balances. We projected a $2.4 million loss, which was a combination of some property tax coming in a little bit lower due to the CPI being lower and having some other costs largely related to the pandemic and other things like that. And some of those will get reimbursed for in the next year. We haven't put that all together yet, and we have no time limit on that right now. So in big picture, there was a less overtime salary. There was, you know, things from the pandemic. There was less transportation costs. There was no food service in the cafeterias, although we had a tremendous support to the entire community on the expenditure side in that we fed or offered food to every family and every child 18 years or younger. And we did this in coordination with District 58, and it really worked out well.
And 68.
And 68, that's correct, both districts. So our ending... So our ending reserve, we issued $10 million in anticipation of having a loss this year. We knew that was coming, and we are projecting a loss for next year. And those two items made us think about issuing working cash bonds so we would have operating funds to work and go through the district. We had no idea what the impact of the pandemic would be for us. So we now end up with a 10.2 ending fund balance. That means we would have had a $200,000 fund balance if we did not issue the working cash fund bonds. On the revenue side, property taxes did come in at 100%, but it was a lower percentage increase that we budgeted because of the reduction or the lowness of the CPI for that year. While a lot of our costs were going up and raising up at a higher CPI, we're having that same problem now, where a lot of things are getting very expensive. We're seeing shortage of drivers.
Nobody can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I see. You got a lot of people back.
I'll try and project.
We're doing the best we can in the space we have.
I heard you, so I'll try and do it. So, well, let's just slide through it. I think we have salary and benefits, we're right on track. Purchase services like transportation and food services were down, but overall, we came in very close, within three tenths of a percent of where we expected to be.
Continue, Mark.
Okay.
Keep going, Mark.
We ended up having a $10.1 million reserve at the end of the year, or, I'm sorry, $10.4 million. If we didn't issue the working cash bonds, that's what we would have had, it's just $400,000 reserve. But we issued the wishful cash bonds, and that's why we have $10.4 million. And I think I'll close that now. I don't think we need to go through the individual charts.
Okay.
We can read them.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions on the year-end financial report from Mark? Thank you, Mark.
No.
All right. At the beginning of the year, we projected it to be actually worse than we turned out, you know, and a lot of good work by the team here to make sure that we tried to keep expenditures under control during a very difficult time. All right, a couple of construction updates. T-99, as the board is well aware, we're expanding T-99 in response to increased enrollment. You can see a few of the photos there. I'm pleased to report that we are on schedule and ahead of budget and getting all of that done. And really excited to move into these new spaces to start next year. Master facility plan, we're wrapping up that four-year plan. We're in this space. Most of South High, though, is under a great deal of construction. North High is clipping along as well. Few great picture, or first, the financial summary. We remain on budget for this. You can see as we had planned, we discussed last month that we wanted a goal of $400,000 in reserves available at the end of the summer, if possible, to work through the summer work. We're on target for that between all of the various funds, including those contractor allowances that could come back at the end of this, as we've reported every month since this started. A couple of photos for you. Here's the North High Commons. It looks very similar to what was promised to us by the architects at the beginning.
Sure does.
If we slide over here to South High, you can see once again, I think that first shot is very similar to a rendering that the architects provided us at the beginning and was on display in our halls. So you can see that's coming along real well. So that one's getting there, and then the auditorium at South High is getting really close to being done.
I know. Isn't that beautiful?
It's gorgeous.
It's just beautiful.
Yeah.
I can't wait till everyone can see it.
Yep. So on schedule, on budget, as we've reported since this began.
So what do you think, the first of August?
No, the first day students report everything. We'll be ready for them to report. Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Another two weeks.
First of August is pretty soon, yeah.
Well, that's what I mean, it is.
No, it'll be ready when students return.
Okay.
As promised. We'll still have a little bit of furniture to move around and, you know, stuff like that, but the, it'll be ready for students on the first day of school.
So are we going to have a grand opening?
Yes. September 11th here will be the grand opening ribbon cutting and tours here at South High. And the following Saturday, on September 18th, we'll be over at North High for the same thing, where we'll do a little ceremony to kick off the morning and then just to offer the ability for people to walk through and see all of the new spaces.
Are those dates already in our calendar?
I think that they were in one of the notes that went to the board. I don't know if I actually did a calendar invite yet, though.
That's what I was asking.
We can get one on your calendar this week.
Would you please?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's my birthday.
All right, well, sweet. We'll make sure there's.
Bring the cake. I'll bring the cake.
All right. Foyer requests were received and responded to. As always, they're posted up on our website. And that brings us to the consent agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Thiele. So now we're looking for a motion for the Board of Education to approve the consent. First of all, is there any item that any board member wishes to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion?
No.
No.
Hearing none? We need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes the personnel report, appointments classified, the personnel report resignations exempt, retirements classified, resignations classified, the personnel report salary and benefits wages, the financial pages, the treasurer's surety bond limits, and the closed session minutes and verbatim recordings.
So moved.
Excuse me, one second, there's one addition, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I also meant to mention that the, you received an updated personnel report. If you looked at it after Friday morning, it was up to date, but there was a change between Thursday night and Friday morning, and that was presented to all the board. So you're approving that updated report as presented.
Understood. Still so moved.
Second.
Mike and Terry.
Thank you.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye. The consent agenda carries. Next, we'll move on to the action items. First, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the 2021, 2022 district goals as presented.
So moved.
Second. Mike and Terry.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Thank you, the motion, the goals are approved as presented. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the discipline code revision and the changes to the student-parent handbook and the, well, there are no changes to the athletic activities handbook as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mike and Sherrell.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we will move to the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Comments, again, are limited to three minutes to provide all visitors an equal opportunity to address the board. Individuals needing more time, or if you don't get to speak tonight, please submit your thoughts in writing to Mrs. Nydic, the board secretary. Visitors addressing the board need to, well, you've already submitted comments, slip if you have not already done so, and you'll be invited to the microphone. Dr. Thiele will be taking, calling people up in the order in which they've come. We'll be tracking the amount of minutes we're talking about each subject, and we may be closing certain topics once we reach the 20-minute park. Prior to addressing the board, please state your full name. The proceedings are being taped recorded for the purpose of producing accurate meeting minutes, and they are being livestreamed. I reserve the right to modify these protocols if circumstances warrant. Audience observations of these protocols is appreciated. Dr. Thiele, who is first?
Can I, Nancy, can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Before we start? I just want to say, you know, I'm sure that we have a lot of people here that are going to be passionate about what they have to speak about, but no matter what side of things people are on, it occurs to me that everybody in here is here because they care about our students. And so I think keeping that in mind is a, is kind of a great thing. I mean, look around you. I mean, it's been a long time since I've seen this many people out, you know, with the sole purpose of doing something that they think is in the best interest of students. And so whether or not we agree or not, let's all agree that that's something we have in common. So, that's all.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
And I will do a quick reminder of the protocols. There will be a timer that I switch to once you begin speaking that will be up on the screen. When that goes down to three minutes, your time is ended, and we respectfully ask you to step away from the microphone and allow me to call the next person up. I'm calling based on the names that are handwritten on a slip, so if I butcher your name, I apologize in advance. Please correct me when you come up to the microphone. I will not be insulted that you did so. And I will also ask that you treat this like a classroom. Allow everybody to be heard. Everybody gets their three minutes. Please don't yell over people, don't argue with people, just allow them their floor for their three minutes. And if you've submitted a slip, you'll get your three minutes as well. That will help the evening move along quicker, will allow us to stay here hearing comments instead of closing off the comments. All right? So pretend you're at school. Your children are watching, we have students here watching.
There you go.
So please model the behavior that we would expect our adults in our community to have. That's what I ask of you. So the first person I'm calling up to the microphone, and this is in the order in which the board secretary received them, is Janet Winningham. Yeah, this microphone right here. I think it's on and ready to go, but if not, just state your name real quick so we can make sure it's on. Let's get it on and, can we make sure that the volume is up on that? Go ahead and say it again, Janet.
My name is Janet Winningham. I am a District 99 resident. I am here.
Yeah, we're working on it. Just give us a moment, please.
I am here tonight to support.
Just one second, Janet. Let us get the sound up on that. All right, go ahead and say your name again, Janet.
Janet Winningham.
Okay, get close to the mic and.
District 99 resident.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to start your timer.
I'm here tonight to support the Board of Education. You are, I tip my hat to you to listen patiently to so many diverse opinions, some more strident than others. I appreciate the fact that you are seriously considering all the angles, all the facets of the decisions that you have to make. And I would hope that people would educate themselves about the topics that they talk about, because not everybody is accurate, as you have said before. And so I just, again, thank you for your service. Thank you for caring about the children here in this district. Thank you.
Maybe if we said who's going to be up next, Hank?
Next, coming up is Jamie Guerin.
And that way, that person could come forward.
Good call, Mike. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you. My name's Chris Hotchkins. I live in the district. I want to speak in support of teachers, of the board giving teachers the tools and training they need in order to create classrooms and lessons in which every student, each and every student feels included and accepted. This is what culturally responsive teaching is, making sure that teachers have the training and the tools they need to ensure that every student, no matter the color of their skin, the religion, their family practices, or doesn't, the language that's spoken in their home, the clothes they wear, the food they eat, that every student feels included and accepted. That every student feels that their family is equally valid and equally American. Who would not want that? Who can object to that? I regret that this board has had to spend time, I know your time is precious, on dealing with issues that really are false. I support the culturally responsive teaching standards developed by the Illinois State Board of Education, and I support this board as you continue to create a school that is inclusive and accepting of all students and their families as equal Americans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Jamie Guerin, followed by Mary Jo Brian Wolfski.
Hello, my name is Jamie Guerin. I have three children who are attending or have attended Downers Grove North. I am here tonight because I saw a flyer encouraging people to attend this board meeting in protest of critical race theory in the classroom. I have been a social studies teacher for 16 years. The job of U.S. social sciences educators is to expose students to historical information and then provide the time and environment for them to think critically about events or policies and their impact on our shared history. Educators with integrity do not share their interpretation of events or their own political views with students. They do not tell students what or how to think, but rather give them the tools to reach their own conclusions. They provide a safe space for students to share differing perspectives and allow them to practice healthy conversation and debate. I believe that District 99 is full of educators with integrity. To provide a comprehensive view of the U.S. colonial period through post-Civil War era, for instance, my class covers the challenges faced by early colonists, rebels, revolutionaries, the vision of the founding fathers, the industrial system, the writing of the Constitution, and westward expansion. Equally important to understanding this era is the study of the displacement of indigenous peoples, the Middle Passage and the transatlantic slave trade, the plantation system, economic dependency on slavery, Reconstruction Era, Black Codes, and Jim Crow South. The debate over the presence of some of these topics in a classroom is puzzling to me. This is because if you spent time in a history classroom, you would see that historical events are a springboard for adolescents to practice the crucial skills needed to become adults who can respectfully engage in discussion and who also understand the impact of government on the lives of its citizens. Unfortunately for many of us, we did not receive this type of training in high school. I wish I had. So if a discussion on the impact of U.S. laws, history, and policy on race and racism emerges in a classroom as a result of the safe space an educator has created, parents should welcome the opportunity their children have to think critically about the topic. They should be grateful for the unique learning opportunity, because that opportunity may be the only exposure to a different perspective that child has, one free of the derisiveness of social media. I am grateful for the exposure my children have had to a multilateral view of U.S. history, one that considers the lens and experience of all Americans and allows for them to consider a human experience outside of their own. Finally, I'm grateful for the trust our school board has in its district's teachers and the role you all play. The value in allowing students to grapple with issues such as race cannot be overstated, and the opportunity to do so in the classroom must be protected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I was the first one to place my name.
Do I have them in the opposite order?
I did not flip them. I did not flip them when I handed them.
Oh, okay. Rich, were you first then?
No, I was last.
Rich?
I'm last.
Rich Benema?
I'm last.
Rich Benema?
He said he's last.
That single one, I meant to hand to you. That single one, very, I got handed to you.
I'm sorry, what?
I handed you that one single one, the end of that you put on the bottom, and originally it went up the top and one from the bottom, maybe.
I'm waiting here.
Sir, we're checking, hold on.
You were the last one in, right, Rich?
No, I was the last.
I have you on the bottom of the pile.
When the issue was explained, oh, you have me on the bottom.
I have you on the bottom of the pile. That's why I'm asking, yeah, this is the order in which.
It just came straight out there, so you should have started with the bottom. I apologize, I did not flip them.
Oh, I should have started with the bottom now at the top?
I did not flip them, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. I, we got our lines crossed here between myself and Ms. Nydic.
Everybody's going to get a chance.
Yeah. All right. I apologize for the confusion. This is our first time doing it this way, so we'll work through it. So Ms. Wolfski, please go, and then next up will be Noel Manley is the next one I have. I'm.
Everybody's gonna get a chance.
Yeah. I apologize for the confusion. This is our first time doing it this way, so we'll work through it. So Ms. Wolski, please go, and then next up will be Noel Manley is the next one I have. I once again apologize for the error.
I would like to start out by saying, my name is Mary Jo Brian Wolski, and my daughter graduated in 95 from Downers Grove North, and I do live still in the district. I'd like to ditto what the person in front of me just said. That was a fantastic presentation, and basically I am here to support the board and to say that I personally believe that the culturally responsive teaching seeks to ensure that all students feel included in their classroom and the lessons taught, and I urge you to see that that happens for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel, you're up next. Once again, I apologize for the error, and followed by that is Jim Wool.
Can the folks in the back hear me? Loud and clear? Okay. Good evening. My name is Noel Manley, and I'm from Darien, Illinois, and I just have a few matters to raise.
It's not as easy as it appears, Mr. Manley.
I just have a few matters to raise with the board tonight. First, I think it's a good step that you've expanded the public comment to 60 minutes. However, do you think it's fair for all the people who've been, who are here now and the number of people who want to comment to fit them all within 60 minutes? Is it fair, and will you be willing to do any accommodation for these folks?
You can email the board at boardmembers@csd99.org with any of your comments.
Okay, so not tonight, then. So I was in attendance at the June 21st, 2021 District 99 meeting, and I've attended many local government meetings, whether they are school boards, city councils, liquor commissions, zoning commissions, and I've never seen a school board meeting where the board so tightly controlled public comment and shut down free speech, and then they have the nerve to walk out. In addition, I've never been referred to as a visitor to any public government meeting. To be clear, you're a unit of government. You have rule-making authority, policymaking authority, and taxing authority. The powers granted to you affect the lives of thousands of students, parents, and tens of thousands of taxpayers. So when we show up to a public board meeting, we're not visitors. We are citizens, we are residents, and we are taxpayers. We're the people who pay and support this institution, and when we come to these meetings, some of us are here to speak and petition our government on issues that concern us. Limiting First Amendment speech and walking out is not how government serves the people. You may not like it, but this is part of the job as elected officials. Second, at the last board meeting, several citizens raised concerns about the issue of critical race theory. Oddly, there were some semantic pushback regarding the language of critical race theory. So again, to be clear, when citizens come before this body and they use the term "critical race theory," they are referring to its elements and manifestations in the following: culturally responsive teaching, Illinois Board of Education Section 24, which takes effect October 21st, Illinois Senate Bill 814, defund the police, microaggressions, equity, diversity, white privilege, my name, my story, the Gary R. Howard Institute, the 1619 Project, and any backdoor Marxism. Finally, in a recent FOIA to D-99, it was discovered that taxpayers footed the bill for 16 copies of How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram Kendi for distribution to families-
Sir, you're out of time. Your time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you. After Mr. Wool will be Carrie Quinn.
Good evening. My name is Jim Wool. At the June board meeting, Superintendent Dr. Thiel and Board President Nancy Kupka, both of you stated that you were unaware of how critical race theory, CRT, was being implemented in Illinois. CRT is being implemented through the culturally responsive teaching and leading standards that was approved by the Illinois General Assembly's Joint Committee on Administrative Rules, better known as JCAR. JCAR approved the culturally responsive teaching and leading standards at their February meeting of 2021. So these standards are now part of the school code. They are an administrative rule that has the same effect of law. For both of you, superintendent and a board president, people dedicated to the education of children, not to be aware of this major change in the teaching code is troubling, to say the least. Dr. Thiel, in a meeting on Wednesday, June 16th, we met in your office to discuss certain educational issues, one of these being CRT. When I asked if CRT is being implemented in this district, you assured me that it was not. Moreover, you said that you did not want to politicize education in District 99. After our meeting, however, this community learned that the administrators at Downers Grove North selected the book How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram X. Kendi for their book study for the 2020-21 academic school year. Mr. Kendi is considered to be the guru of CRT, and his book is considered to be an authoritative book on CRT. Dr. Thiel, you were not honest with me at our meeting. You tried to hide the fact that there are administrators who are trying to covertly push CRT into our schools. Also, we just recently learned that at a department meeting at North High School, the following topic was discussed: How do we improve our teaching about systematic racism? Great. Now certain administrators at North believe that teachers to be racist? What an uplifty message to send to our teachers. Truly, I understand why many teachers view administrators and school boards with a great deal of mistrust, that you did not support teachers, that teachers who disagree with CRT better keep quiet. Dr. Thiel, and the school board, if you are enthusiastic supporters of CRT, then why not come forward and say so? After all, the book How to Be an Anti-Racist was paid for with taxpayer dollars. Department meetings are pushing teachers to support CRT. The prophets of CRT, these false prophets, are ravenous wolves in sheep's clothing who have come to devour our children with this nefarious and racist theory. Critical race theory bears bad fruit.
Ms. Quinn is followed by Ms. Spinosa, Cherry Spinosa.
I'm gonna raise this, okay?
Mr. Quinn?
Oh.
I think that's all you, that's all it'll do, so.
I'm Rich Brennan, a Downers Grove resident. I support the teachers, students, parents, board members, and residents who do not approve of political indoctrination in our schools through DEI programs infused with the tenets of critical race theory. CRT is Marxist ideology and practice. The communist dictatorship we're watching in Cuba crush its people is Marxist ideology and practice. Race is the chosen battlefield for war against the United States of America because Marxism failed to defeat us economically. American capitalism and our Judeo-Christian foundation provides what Marxism steals from the people: upward mobility for all who will work. Systemic racism, white privilege, CRT, all that stuff's a diversion to answer the failure of the great society welfare state with $20 trillion taken from the taxpayers to solve urban black poverty. It won't work. Only work can lift you out of poverty. The welfare state discourages work. Welfare checks devalue the economic contribution of the black father. Welfare also undermined his authority in the family. The welfare state destroyed the family on a massive scale. Systemic racism and critical race theory are both weapons of the anti-American left. They preach racial animosity. They teach Downers Grove students that the multiracial friends they grew up with are not their friends. CRT divides by skin color into oppressors and oppressed, black versus white, unacceptable. Teach that we're all God's children. Do not teach grievance politics. And, don't believe me, here's my study list for what I've got here, starting with these noted black education and expert people: Justice Clarence Thomas, Shelby Steele, Dr. Thomas Sowell, Robert Woodson, Jason Whitlock, Dr. Walter Williams, James Craig, the retired Detroit Police Chief, Charles Barkley, Dr. Elvita King, and there's a black man in Caledonia, Michigan who said to his school board, CRT teaches my daughter to hate her white mother. And last, Dorothy Tillman, the esteemed race, the esteemed political activist for the black community in Chicago for more than 60 years on WVON radio Saturday morning, said, "Critical race theory has no solutions for black people." Thank you.
Next up is Sherri Spinosa, followed by Mary O'Dowd.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Spinosa. I'm a 17-year resident of Downers Grove, and I am the parent of two very recent DGN graduates. Never before have I addressed the board, but I can no longer be quiet about how we are being misled with regards to critical race theory in the D-99 curriculum. Equality is an American ideal, perhaps our most important one. Equity, which is what critical race theory tries to engineer, does something else entirely. I believe it's time to expose what critical race theory, or CRT, would look like in our high schools, and I believe that if our school's board was transparent about this, most parents would object. CRT, which goes by other names such as deep equity, is couched in vague slogans like social justice and human-centered design thinking. On our district's website, the program is called SEED, or Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity. SEED uses phrases such as "creating an equitable place of learning for students" and "aims to develop cultural competence and effectiveness." This language is designed to be vague, to make you question yourself. The media would have you believe that you don't really understand it, and schools would have you believe that this is the best way to bring about empathy and inclusion. But this is not just a thought exercise. Our school is now attempting to make it part of the curriculum, and this is not an inconsequential thing. The curriculum here is called My Name, My Story. It will thrust upon students that skin color is what we should focus on, and will teach kids that white privilege defines our nation. Teachers will be instructed to teach that racism is present everywhere and always. It will instill a belief that we all have unconscious bias, and we are all committing microaggressions. It will divide our already distressed kids into two groups: oppressors and the oppressed, and teach that in order to combat racism, we must elevate and emphasize race even more. Now I ask some questions of the board. Do you think skin color matters? Do you want our kids to be taught that the most important things in life are those they cannot control or change? And third, do you think the SEED program will create greater degrees of mutual trust? I think there's better ways to establish harmony and true equality than to adopt a curriculum that will drive a wedge between all of us. Let's teach our children how to think, not what to think. Thank you.
Next up is Mary O'Dowd, followed by Terry Newsom.
My name is Mary O'Dowd. Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is an American flag. It honors my uncle who served in World War II. I have another one at home that honors my dad. My uncle was also a teacher in the public school system, not in a nice place like this. He chose instead to serve the inner-city schools in Chicago. He did not make a lot of money there. Nonetheless, for years, he personally bought school supplies, books, art supplies, and even musical instruments for his students, because he was dedicated to them and wanted them to get the best education possible. My uncle did not teach his students what to think, he taught his students how to think. My uncle would be appalled by the radical leftist agenda known as critical race theory or CRT that is being foisted on our students today through systemic indoctrination at schools such as this one. You can call it culturally responsive teaching, equity, diversity, and inclusion, or any other politically correct euphemism you like. Maybe some people are fooled by that. Some old dead white guy once said, "If you tell a big enough lie, and tell it frequently enough, it will be believed." That guy also said, "Let me control the textbooks, and I will control the state." That guy's name was Adolf Hitler. Another guy said, "Education is a weapon whose effects depend on who holds it in their hands and at whom it is aimed." That guy's name was Joseph Stalin. We, the people, reject CRT in our schools. We, the people, reject those who foist this lie upon us and our children. We, the people, believe that two plus two will never equal five, and we, the people, respectfully remind the members of this board that you work for us and that we, the people, vote. May God bless, may God bless the United States of America and all who serve her. Thank you.
Pardon me, give me one second, please. We have four minutes left for the topic of the equity, inclusion, or critical race theory.
Can I just, I think since we got people out of order, we actually had four speakers who were close at the top instead of being at the end.
Oh, yeah, we can, yeah, we can continue.
So that would bring us to 16.
Okay, we'll continue going.
To be fair.
Yep, yep. Terry, Terry Newsom, and then I believe Rich Brennan went, correct? Yes, I think it was Carrie Quinn.
Why she and the governor, why?
I believe Carrie Quinn, Rich went in Carrie's place, so.
Yes.
Carrie, you'll follow Terry? All right, go ahead, Terry.
Thank you. I don't know how I'm gonna top that one. It's great. My name is Terry Newsom. I have twins that just graduated Eisenhower. I was originally gonna talk about the mask, but based on what you said today, I don't think that they're gonna be required. It's gonna be optional, correct? Based on the science and how it may or may not change.
Based on the CDC guidelines.
Or the CDC guidelines, scientists, doctors, whatever. If you remember, they've been wrong in pretty much everything since this whole mess started. And I think if Dr. Seuss was still alive, he could write a book on Dr. Fossey. No mask, one mask, two masks. So anyway, I'm gonna just ad hoc, since I'm not gonna talk anymore on masks. Critical race theory, I think you folks call it equity. It's really a weight of mass, critical race theory. My son just graduated Eisenhower, and he came home probably the last month of school, and he told me that he learned from his English teacher, they were having a conversation with the class, and she said that there's no American drink. And I had him sit down, and I said, "Are you sure she said that?" And he goes, "Yes." And then the kids were talking, and one of the other kids made a statement, and she said that it's exaggerated, and it's not there for every child. So I made sure his statement was accurate. I left a message for the principal. I said, "I hope my son heard incorrectly, and I'd like to hear from you." So he did call me back and spoke with the teacher, and said my son did hear correctly, but it wasn't teaching, they were having a conversation. So I think it's really basically a spin on her views or opinion came out on a school that supposedly doesn't teach critical race theory. Since I was- Since I was prepared to talk about masks, I have none else to say. Right now, we're good. And thanks to my son Anthony. I'm proud that he's here. I'm proud of you, boy.
Carrie Quinn, followed by Kylie Spahn.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carrie Queerin. I'm a Downers Grove lifer. I went to Hillcrest, O'Neil, and South. I'll have a second kid come through DGS this fall. In terms of CRT, although I appreciate quotes and pictures of Martin Luther King that we've been seeing a lot of lately, it would make a lot more impact if you, in my opinion, invited a black neighbor coworker over in 2021 and asked them, "How are things going? How are your struggles? What are their concerns?" It's easy to put forth symbols and words we all find familiar, but it's a lot harder to have a conversation face-to-face with black friends, neighbors, and coworkers with uncomfortable conversations. That all being said, in my opinion and in my niece's opinion, who's a teacher downstate, CRT is a no for these reasons. CRT needs to be taught so carefully and thoughtfully that it needs a skilled teacher to do so, and a lot of the skilled teachers are leaving the profession in droves. The black friends that I've talked to in the race talks that I hold in my backyard monthly feel this is being rushed, and it's very important that it's taught to not pit one race against another. Again, that's their opinion. If my kid was told, "You have white privilege," they would know. I know I don't have any barriers. I never had to go through anything to get where I need to be in my life. They also know that although I love them more than anyone else, they are not more important than the kids sitting next to them. So that would be offensive to my kid. Teachers could also face backlash and retaliation, as we can clearly see. Our teachers have been through enough in the last year. And to put this on them now? In terms of the sex bill, rumors were going around that some of the topics were inappropriate, inappropriately explicit, which I would have had a problem with. I read the bill, not all of it, but some of it, and some of the topics, anatomy and physiology, puberty and adolescent sexual development, gender identity and expression, social, sorry, sexual orientation and identity, sexual health. I don't see anything wrong with these topics, especially consent and healthy relationships. Although, again, that is something that needs to be delved deeper into. But initially, we need to read the bill and make sure we're working off facts. Masks. Last month, a speaker said, "We support police." Of course we do. The CDC is the police in a pandemic. I don't wanna wear masks either, but if we have to, we have to show our kids the content of our character.
You're out of time. Thank you. Kylie Spahn, followed by Leslie Sadowski Fugit.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me at the back? My name is Kylie Spahn. I am a District 99 parent. Firstly, I would like to thank the board, the administration, and the teachers for all your hard work in navigating COVID and in educating our children. I support your efforts. There has been a lot of confusion and misinformation at our school board meetings regarding CRT. CRT can apply to two subjects. The first is critical race theory, which is an academic theory about the historical impacts of systemic racism on our laws and in our education system. This theory is taught at the graduate collegiate level. So I'm not gonna discuss that right here. The second subject referring to CRT is called culturally responsive teaching. Let me stipulate that culturally responsive teaching is not the same as critical race theory. They are not interchangeable. We are all aware of the Common Core standards for K through 12 public school students. Think of culturally responsive teaching standards as the Common Core standards for teachers. Culturally responsive standards were adopted by the state of Illinois in February of this year. The standards will take effect in October. You can find the standards on ISBE's website. So what is culturally responsive teaching? In a nutshell, culturally responsive teaching is a method of teaching that promotes the recognition and understanding of cultures of students in a diversified classroom. A teacher builds stronger relationships with their students when adopting a culture-inclusive approach to teaching. Having a culture-inclusive classroom fosters the development of critical thinking, empathy, tolerance, peer relationships, and education outcomes. These standards allow school districts and teachers to select a broad range of materials that integrates different cultures and cultural experiences into their lessons. I teach at a Christian-based preschool. One of the best ways to bring culturally responsive practices into our classroom is by reading to our students. We start the school year reading a book called "All Are Welcome Here," a beautiful book about welcoming all students to the classroom regardless of race, religion, or disability. At Thanksgiving, we dedicate a whole week to Native American Indian culture by reading "Whale in the Sky." At Christmas, we share many stories of baby Jesus. Other books that highlight paper of color and cultures include "The Snowy Day," "One Love," "I Am Love in the Garden." On the last day of school, I read one of my favorite books called "Tutti Lou, Ruby Blue," which is a story about two friends. One is Asian and one is biracial, and their imagined adventures while on a playdate. By diversifying the literature that children are exposed to, we are showing every kid in our classroom that all are welcome here. I would like to leave you with a culturally responsive teaching moment that happened several years ago. During our second circle, a student and her father taught the class how to count to 10 in Arabic. This not only exposed the students--
Miss Spahn, you're out of time.
Thank you very much.
After Ms. Sadowski Fugit is Eileen Briner.
Hello. My name is Leslie Sadowski Fugit. I do live in D-99 Borders. My daughter is just entering kindergarten this fall, so we have a few years before she heads to Downers Grove South. But as an advocate for equity and someone who cares deeply about education in this country, I felt I must come forward. The weaponization of critical race theory in District 99 is not a local problem. Conservative media is using CRT as the next boogeyman. The objectors ignore the fact that they are prioritizing white discomfort over something that does no harm and doesn't even exist in the K through 12 classroom over the actual documented pain and discrimination of systemically marginalized groups in America. In 2020, when everything was virtual due to COVID-19, a Seattle employee leaked footage of an anti-bias training session and sent the footage to a journalist named Christopher Rufo. He decided to capitalize on this moment, likely for his own fame, and set out on a quest to link anything related to diversity, equity, and inclusion to CRT. He became a darling. Thank goodness we haven't had any legislation here in Illinois. But this mobilization against CRT reflects not a problem with our education system, but rather the fear among white Americans that we will lose our centuries-long stranglehold on this country. By focusing on our public education system, they aim to cut off an honest depiction of American history at its source. Don't let them fool you. This was never about accurately representing American history. It is and has always been about maintaining the status quo, keeping power consolidated in the wealthy, connected, white population, and continuing to deny black citizens a voice in our history and our democracy. Shifting gears, with regard to sex ed, the new changes are needed and welcome. Children should learn consent before they enter kindergarten. I've already worked with my incoming kindergartner to understand consent. The representation of the LGBTQ community is also long overdue. I know that one community member stated at a previous board meeting that there are two genders, two sexes. And as someone with a master's degree in a biology field who has published peer-reviewed literature and who currently works in healthcare, I need to correct that. There is now an ample amount of peer-reviewed literature that supports the idea that both gender and sex exist along spectrum. The reason why this is such an up-and-coming research area is a direct result of bias. And I'm grateful that these studies are finally being funded, so we're basing our curriculum decisions on solid evidence and data and not on political talking points. So I wanna wrap up by thanking District 99 for your level-headedness, your work on being inclusive and welcoming, and for providing an excellent education to all students. Please continue the work that you're doing, and I am thrilled that my daughter is one day going to get to come here and attend Downers Grove South. Thank you.
I would just like to remind the audience that we've asked you not to speak over the speakers. Continuing to do so will result in a lessening of the time that we're gonna take public comment. So please respect those at the microphone, whether you agree with them or not. Thank you.
Give me one moment, please. We've passed 20 minutes on the topic of critical race theory combined with equity and inclusion, which is--
Include those four--
That included the four extra people at the beginning.
Okay.
So we're approaching 30 minutes on that topic.
So this will be our last comment.
I have mixed comments. I have several different comments.
Okay.
That's fine.
But this will be our last--
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I don't wanna interrupt you until you start going. So this will be our last comment related to CRT. You're free to comment with whatever during your three minutes. After this, we'll bring up people who-- how many more?
We have quite a few, but people can choose to come up or to skip their turn if that was the single topic that they wish to speak about.
Okay, so we'll ask you to-- after you're done, we'll ask you to self-monitor. Just come forward if you have something other than CRT. And I would just remind you that you can send a letter to the board outlining your concerns if you were not able to finish tonight or you did not speak tonight. Thank you, sorry for delay.
No, no problem at all. Thank you very much. My name's Eileen Briner, and I've written out my presentation so I don't go over three minutes. I don't wanna get gavelled. That would be so embarrassing. I've had a huge revelation in studying critical race theory. Thank you so much. I've checked with my doctor and psychologist, and both have confirmed that indeed I do need to be the person that I feel that I am. Therefore, tonight, I am coming to you not as a white female, but as a black female.
Please, please.
It explains so much to me. I understand now why everything has been so hard for me. I don't have any black privilege. Treatments will begin shortly to darken my skin, but no worries, I'll accept all your apologies for your oppression. I've learned about the proposed Sex Education Program, which mentions anal sex 29 times in the freshman program. When I was a kid, that was a derogatory term. Imagine what this is going to do in a teenager's head. It will truly transform America. Also, I've learned about the scoring here at District 99. The lowest score you can get for anything is a 40. A test, an assignment, even an assignment not turned in, you get a 40. You're preparing students for the real world? Well, I'm gonna try this out in the real world. I'm gonna go to my employer and tell them that I'm gonna work Monday through Thursday at 80% efficiency and not show up on Friday. And I expect to be paid for five days. That comes out to 72%. That comes out to 72% for the week. So, you know, I hope you're right. I wanna get paid for five days. So I'm just gonna go back to my seat now and try to figure out how to pay my property taxes, which pay for this awesome education that you're giving our students.
Thank you.
Nicole Johnson is next, followed by Janice Sleeder. Nicole Johnson, followed by Janice Sleeder.
Again, just to reiterate, if you are here to speak about CRT, that time has expired, so we ask that you give it to the next person.
Change of subject. Hi, yes, I am Nicole Centro-Johnson. I have a senior at North. We are second-generation Downers Grove North family. I got a text to talk about this on my way in, so I'm winging it. Thank you for having us. I think our kids are excited for the first time in a year and a half to go back to school. You know, I'm watching the football team. You guys, we're going in the right direction. So thank you. Dr. Thiel, you used the word "choice." We need to use that word more often. Thank you for using it. You need to know, there's a lot of us parents that are just not choosing to vaccinate our kids. I know many of us disagree, guys, but I'm not doing it to send them to a concert, to travel, and I'm not doing it for school. As of today, VAERS-- everyone knows VAERS. We can all get it. 11,000 people have died from the vaccine. That doesn't include the injuries, okay? So the benefit does not outweigh the risk for the age of our children. I understand choice. If you wanna get it, get it. But no, this could be an issue for a couple of years, guys. And what we haven't dealt with is the quarantine. We don't know yet. I know you said we're waiting. We think it's gonna be 10 days. But does everyone know this year, when our kids have to quarantine, which will be 10 days, no remote learning? Did you know that? They're just going home. Can you imagine a senior? Five courses? Teaching yourself? You know, it was bad enough when they were in their rooms last year for all those hours. But now, they have to teach themselves. We need a plan. We need a plan. Many of these kids will be healthy. Many of these kids will be healthy. They can't test and come back to school. They just have to stay home. They may be healthy kids. Our kids are already behind in Illinois. We all have cousins, friends who have kids in other states. Our kids are behind. We never went back full-time. We can't even say that for the rest of the state. Our kids are behind. We have to have a plan. If you're going to force these healthy kids to go home, how are we going to teach them? I'm assuming education is still the most important thing here, right? It should be educating these kids. We got to get our kids to college, and they are not at the same level as these other states. We have to have a plan in our district for what we're going to do, and I really, I look to you to make that a good plan. I don't want to send my healthy kid home in his bedroom for 10 days, but if I do, please tell me you can either remote educate him, or the teachers are going to spend a couple hours, you know, getting with these kids so they have a plan and they don't fall anymore behind. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading this. Ruthia Bodley, I'm sorry if I have that wrong, followed by Stephanie Trussell.
I thought you said Janice Sleeder.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did. Janice, you're next. Then Ruthia Bodley, followed by Stephanie Trussell. Thank you.
Thank you. I know there's a lot there. My name is Janice Sleeder, and I hope everybody can hear me in the back. I am a longtime resident of Downers Grove. My great-great-grandfather homesteaded here in 1853, back in the day when the abolitionists were having Downers Grove as a stop on the Underground Railroad. Now, I am one of 15 members of my family going from my father through my kids that have been in District 99 high schools. I know this is a difficult situation, and I'm trying to come up with some alternative information and positive ways to go forward. Everyone has to respect everybody else. Martin Luther King and many of the original, say, 1950s and 60s civil rights leaders said, "No one should be judged by the color of their skin. They should be judged by the content of their character." So the color of anyone's skin should not be determining who gets preference over whom. Or anti-Semitism, you know, there's a lot of this that's talking about black versus white. Well, there's also Hispanic, Native American, Asian, Native, you know, LGBT. Everybody should have the right to free speech to give their opinion. Now, on this, I've done, I've had a lot of personal experience through the 50s, 60s, 70s, and whatever. I'm 73 years old, and I've seen a lot of progress. There's a lot of way to go yet. But critical race theory, as I have read it and the way it's been portrayed, is preference based on skin color, divisiveness based on skin color. There is a record number of rich minorities, middle-class minorities, in a record number of mixed marriages. I do not want my friends' grandkids and my grandkids who are mixed race to have a conflict that they're half-oppressed or half-oppressor. This makes no sense to me. Now, some positive information, and I'm passing on Robert Woodson with the Project 1776. I'm passing on the President's Commission Report, which treat racism and the problems we've had, but how do we go forward in a positive way to improve things for everybody? Also, the book Red, White, and Black, which is essays of over 20 black civil rights leaders, historians, academics, and pastors. Please use this as part of your information set on your decision.
Thank you.
Once again, the time has expired for conversations on critical race theory, diversity, equity, inclusion. We invite people to come up for any other topics to address the board. This is under board policy as to how much time we allocate at each board meeting to allow people to talk on a variety of topics. If that is the topic at which you wish to address the board, we invite you to email the board at boardmembers@csd99.org. Please pass on your turn if that is your topic that you wish to discuss this evening. Thank you. Ruthia?
Ruthila.
Ruthila, thank you.
If it's okay with you, I'm just going to use my teacher voice, because I think a lot of you can hear me in the background. I use my teacher voice, right? But you couldn't hear anybody when they were just standing up here talking. I'm like, I'm really sorry. When you were mumbling quietly about the stuff that you never expect for anyone to pay attention to, right? But those of you back can hear me now, right?
Yeah.
And you don't probably want to hear another word I'm going to say, because I'm going to tell you that that is what equity is about. And Hank, you were going to tell me that I can't have any more time.
You are correct.
And I appreciate and respect that, which is not what I've seen from my fellow people in this room.
Next up is Stephanie Trussell, followed by Annette McNeely. Stephanie Trussell, followed by Annette McNeely.
Stephanie Trussell, DuPage County resident since 1994. We want to talk about systemic racism. Well, I fled systemic racism when I chose to move to DuPage County so my children could be educated like everyone is. I didn't have any --
Ma'am, we're not covering the topic of equity or inclusion.
I can't talk about CRT.
No, we're out of time.
We're out of time on that subject.
We're out of time for that topic. If you would like to address the board on another topic, I can reset your timer and you can start over.
No, that's -- I don't want to break any rules.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Annette McNeely. Next up is Annette McNeely.
Okay. I want the group to quiet down so we can hear what speakers have to say, and if you cannot, for the safety of those in this room, we will move into closed session, and I will close the second reception of visitors. So take a moment.
Yes.
Take a moment. Ma'am, are you here to speak about CRT? No. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm actually going to say that when you bring up people of color, you're referring that white people don't have color. So we come in vanilla, ivory, sandstone.
Okay, ma'am.
Ma'am, we're not --
That is, I can say that. It's not going to --
We're not here to talk about equity, inclusion, diversity.
But I will talk about something else. I'm going on.
I will reset your timer if --
So I want to talk about masks.
Okay.
All right.
So there is a career that is scientifically and physician-based, and it is called an ecological consultant. They are fit testers. And what we do, what they do, is they go around to hospitals, teach doctors, nurses, transporters, police stations, rangers, on how to wear a mask properly and what mask to wear. I will tell you that I have never, ever told anyone the way to stop a communicable disease is by putting a surgeon's mask or a piece of cloth over your face. So if you want to prevent a communicable disease, it's an N95 mask meant to wear for a short period of time, thrown out, wash your face and hands. Don't be lulled into a false sense of security. And also, I did want to touch on, I know critical race is beating a dead horse, but it is a historical thing. It was thought up at Harvard by some students.
We're no longer taking that topic. Your time has expired.
Which do not let Asians into Harvard anymore.
Ma'am, we're not taking that topic any longer. Thank you.
But I got it in.
Jeffrey Mack, followed by Robin Ballinger. Jeffrey Mack, followed by Robin Ballinger.
My name is Jeffrey Mack. I'm a District 99 alumni, as are my three sons, and I'm here to talk about Senate Bill 818, which will mandate national sex education standards in Illinois public schools, which some believe are based on pornographic and age-inappropriate national education standards. What is wrong with the NSES or the national standards? K through 12, or K through 2 would have to define gender, gender identity and gender role stereotypes. 3 through 5 would have to learn the difference between sexual orientation and gender identity. 6 through 8 would know all about vaginal, oral, and anal sex and methods of contraception. 9 through 12 would see videos depicting vaginal, oral, and anal sex and study reproductive justice. Why would anybody push that kind of a education program in our children? On June 18th, on June 18th, Wake Up 99 asked you to stand up for Illinois, the community, by asking Governor Pritzker to veto Senate Bill 818. And Superintendent Thiel, you mentioned that you're not opposing the bill. Not opposing the bill basically is a passive support of the bill in our estimation, and we strongly urge you to oppose this bill, or District 99 to oppose this bill. That is an abuse and an assault on our children. You have a duty to prevent the inappropriate national standards material from being shown in 9th through 12th grades. This is not about keeping you safe and healthy and promotes the early -- excuse me. It's about grooming innocent and precious children early age to have sex, forcing them to agree there are more than two genders, and that there are no boundaries or norms when it comes to sexual behavior. This will destroy the traditional family, trample on religious beliefs, corrupt the culture, and harm vulnerable children who are struggling through the normal and difficult years of puberty. The job of the school is to teach basic fundamental subjects such as the science, math, literature, social studies. That's the core mission. When we go off into teaching these inappropriate subjects, how are children going to learn when all they can think about after being in sex ed is to go home and have sex? Kids have a hard enough time concentrating without them having these things forced on them. We ask District 99 to actively oppose Senate Bill 818, and if it becomes law, not to teach such a sex education at all, and declare District 99 to be a sanctuary for innocent children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Robin Ballinger, followed by Janet, I think it says Nortoney. I'm sorry. Robin?
Hi, my name is Robin Ballinger, and I wanted to say thank you to the board for listening to all of the various opinions and for clearing up the misinformation when the board meeting started. My topic was on equity, and I'll take a pass out of the respect of your request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Janet, I think it says Nortoney, followed by Gerald Stapleton. I'm sorry.
All right, me again. I'm not a public speaker. Where should I be looking at? Are you guys?
It's the board.
The board, okay. Sorry, guys. So this is second -- okay, I'm sorry. My name is Janet Navatney. I've had three children come through this school. This is my last one. I'm trying to get through. And I am very concerned as a parent that I just hope that you guys can listen to us as parents, that we just want the kids to be taught the normal stuff, math, science, social studies, and let us be deciding of what we want to do for them, whether it be medically, as far as like the vaccinations. It's a choice. And I feel like everyone has a reason why they're going to get it. There's a reason why they can't, and there's people who don't want it. There's so many reasons, and everyone should have the right to have that power to do what's right with their body instead of being forced and pushed. And I respect the fact that you guys are trying to give so much information, but I think we're kind of sometimes beating a dead horse. Whoever wants to get it has probably gotten it, and who hasn't probably is not or can't. There's so many reasons why, and that's a whole nother story. So I feel very pressured right now for the kids to have to get vaccinated or the parents, or there's like, we're bad because we do or we don't. And that really has to be kind of, I feel, left out of the school. We have, parents should have the right to do what's right medically with our children and with the doctors and with our children. So it really shouldn't be pushed upon the school. And same with the mask. You know, if you want to wear a mask, great, and if you don't, whatever. I feel like the CDC and the WHO and all these other three-letter thing organizations are guidelines. It's not the law. I mean, and like, people have done their research, have their opinions, and I think, again, parents should have the right to decide what we feel is right for the child. And my daughter didn't get to go to school at all last week, or last year, and she did, she got basically bad grades. And so she went to math and she got straight A. But she came home with the headaches, and she couldn't breathe, and she had the worst acne, like, poor thing. And that's really bad for a 15-year-old. She's gained a lot of weight from not going to school. There's a lot of psychological and like emotional things that are happening, and I want her to go back to school, but with the conditions that I don't know what's going on. I don't know. I feel like you guys really, hopefully, can listen to the parents. That's all I ask, is just please listen to the parents. And then back to the guidelines, as the child is not vaccinated, my child or whoever child who's not vaccinated should have the right to have education. If they have to be quarantined because quote-unquote, they're going to give someone a disease that they don't even have, let them have some education and not be stuck at home twiddling their thumbs for 10 days, playing with the cat, or with computers, or whatever. Like, let them teach. They need to, or learn. Let them learn and let them, you know, still be allowed to have education when they're not allowed to come back to school because they weren't vaccinated. So I hope all that made sense. I have a bad headache, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Gerald Stapleton, followed by Russ Navatney.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Stapleton. I have been a resident of District 99 for over 40 years. I have two children and three grandchildren who have had the privilege of attending Downers Grove South. I've also been a teacher or principal and a college instructor. And I wanted to speak up in support of the education that promotes our ideals as a nation, is culturally responsive, and recognizes both our successes and our shortcomings. In, out of respect for the board's decision, I will yield my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Russ Navatney, followed by Marcella. Boy, my eyes are getting worse as the night goes on. Chor?
Trey.
Trey, thank you. So Russ is up next.
Hey, can everybody hear me? Yeah, okay. Hi, my name is Russ Navatney. I've been a resident of Woodridge for 23 years. My daughter, Sophia, spent her entire freshman year taking classes at South via online learning. She was deeply affected by this, as my wife had just mentioned, she was the second-to-last speaker, about weight gain and, you know, really feeling isolated and depressed and just wanting things to go back to normal. And, you know, I do appreciate the board's push to make as many things as possible go back to normal, just because of the fact that I see exactly the way that it affected my daughter, and I don't want to see her go through that again. So I was encouraged when I read the proposal released last Thursday for the return of the school, the fact that mask-wearing would be optional for all students, whether they're vaccinated or not. I sent all the board members an email about that, and I thank you all for the proposal. Dr. Thiel, you and I had a couple of exchanges through email, and I appreciate your responses as well. What I quite didn't understand, and I know this isn't a forum to ask questions, but why does it take so long to vote on, I guess? I was under the impression at first that this was a proposal that was all put together, and then it was going to be voted on tonight. I don't know if anybody else was under that impression, but I just, I guess kind of rhetorically want to know, kind of ask the question of what happens between now and the next board meeting in order to decide whether or not to vote on this, or to vote in favor of it. I don't know if any of you can answer that or give me a short answer or what, but it's just kind of something that I would like to know.
Typically, we don't, but this is a very simple answer, is that the guidance just came out. We're expecting new updates from Illinois State Board of Education, Illinois Department of Public Health. Plus, before the board takes action, as the superintendent, I always try to provide them time to digest the information I've given them before they have to vote on it. As you saw with the board goals tonight, they came at multiple meetings before action was taken. So
Right.
That's our practice.
Okay. I mean, but I guess, is it the view of the entire board that you guys all want to have the kids go back to school and be able to choose whether or not they want to wear a mask, and choose whether or not they want to be able to be vaccinated or anything else? I mean, there's got to be some general consensus already, right?
I presented what the administration is going to recommend this evening, and then at a future board meeting, the board will have the opportunity to take action.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you answering my questions. So thanks for your time. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Marcella. Linda Bodem will follow.
Good evening. My name is Marcella Durdick Shray, and I've been a resident of Downers Grove for the past 25 years. Both my children graduated from Downers South. I'm a member of Awake Illinois and a member of the Illinois Chapter of Children's Health Defense. I'm a first-generation American, daughter of European immigrants. My father fled a communist regime at the age of 17. As a child during World War --
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but is this about CRT?
No, it's not.
Okay, go ahead.
As a child during World War II, my father spent time in a concentration camp. He eventually made his way to the US, attended the United States Naval Academy, and proudly served in the military for 27 years. I'm a private person, but I share these things because you need to understand that I do not take our freedoms, particularly our medical freedoms, for granted. I'm here tonight because I have watched educational institutions over the past 16 months implement ill-conceived policies with egregious overreach and a total disregard for law and constitutional rights under the guise of public health. When questioning these policies, I'm always met with the same rote response. We are following CDC guidelines. Law supersedes guidance, and mandates are not law. The CDC is not the fourth branch of government. This never-ending parody is insulting, dismissive, and a complete deflection of responsibility, in my opinion. I've spent over 20 years personally researching psychopharmaceutical threats to children, and by extension, vaccine injury. It has always been my personal belief that the subject of health should remain outside the realm of education. Parents should be the ones making health decisions for their children. The vaccine, the masks, the testing are under EUA only. Any product with this designation must be voluntary under US Code 21, Section 360BBB3. There must be informed consent. The individual has the ultimate right to accept or refuse administration of any EUA product. That is the law. These mandates being imposed represent a loss of God-given freedom over our own children and their bodies. This is beyond unacceptable. They violate the US Constitution, the Nuremberg Code, and the Helsinki Declaration, and schools implementing these protocols as a condition of enrollment are complicit in atrocities toward our children. Regardless of where you stand relative to the mainstream narrative that is this pandemic, and regardless of where you stand on the vaccine debate, one thing is perfectly clear. and regardless of where you stand on the vaccine debate, one thing is perfectly clear: there is no legal justification for these mandates. It bears repeating, there must be informed consent, and the individual has the ultimate right to accept or refuse. Vaccination, testing, and maxing choices for all students in District 99 must be optional. Parental rights over our children will be restored. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
What's that? Let me end it up. I think we're past, going back to 30 and-
Are we in total time?
Yeah.
Under research, we're past now.
Let me check. No, we still have time.
Thank you.
I will invite up Lynn Gelmines, followed by Eric Windishman.
I've got eight minutes.
And we have eight minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. I did it again. I did it again. Linda, you're up next, then Lynn, followed by Eric, and we have eight minutes remaining in the reception of visitors.
Hi, my name is Linda Bodom. I've written to Dr. Thiele and the board numerous times, and now I figured it was time for you to put a face to my letters. I'm here because I have asked some questions, and although Dr. Thiele wrote me back, he didn't actually answer my questions. I filed up with another email requesting the information, but again, it went unanswered. I wonder if the board even reads the email sent by stakeholders in this community. I will make sure to keep my comments to three minutes to avoid the board calling a recess and walking out and ending public comment like last month. I have requested the specific directives given to teachers in this district regarding personal political opinions given in class. Where does the district stand on this issue? Are the teachers allowed to give their political views? I have also requested a link to curriculum resources used in language arts classes. I would like to know what the approved curriculum topics are and approved resources to be used. This is a public school, so we have taxpayers, have the right to see what's being taught to our children, especially when it comes to controversial topics such as police brutality, race, and sexuality. I believe the curriculum needs to be transparent. Sending me a generic link to a course description is not sufficient. The superintendent has a responsibility to know what is going on in the schools, as well as be aware of the controversial topics being proposed in the state. When people spoke last month, he was unaware of everything, which was very surprising to me. I'm also here as I have been watching the meetings month after month, and I see that the board states to visitors that they do not answer questions. I would like to call your attention to your own District 99 board protocols. Protocol does not allow the board to discuss or debate topics raised. However, if there is a simple answer to the question, it may be provided during the meeting, and complex questions will be answered in writing from the superintendent if contact information is provided or sent after the meeting. It appears that you can answer simple questions in a meeting, yet I haven't seen it done. I did see it once tonight. And I sure hope that the superintendent is following up his answers, as I will be leaving my email for answers to my questions. The best way to get parents and community members to be supportive is to be transparent and provide answers when questions are raised. Thank you.
I recommend that we just invite all six before we end the reception of visitors.
I'm fine with that. Does anybody object? Fine.
All right.
Again, we're going to though ask that if you're here to speak about critical race since we've, the reasons we've spent a good portion of time on that tonight, that you allow that topic.
Eric Windishman is next, followed by Susan. We're still restricting the topic of critical race theory, diversity, equity, inclusion, as we've expanded our time on that. Eric Windishman is up next, followed by Susan Carroll.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Eric Windishman, members of school board and attendees. I'm not going to talk about what the paper is, I'm going to talk about liberty a little bit. But members of school board, I would like to express my appreciation to the dedicated staff and teachers of our school community for the work they do. My children attended Downers Grove South and it helped prepare them for their future pursuits. However, as a citizen and taxpayer, payer, taxpayer, I just have some issues, and one of my main things now that, we're not talking about that other thing, is this is, this is a community school district, community Downers Grove, right? It's not the District of Illinois school district. It's not the District of the United States of America, even though we're all Americans, we're citizens of the state of Illinois, but it's the community, and we're all here sharing what we believe to be important issues in this community. So given that, I think we return to the core principles of our nation's founding, once understood to be self-evident, that all humans are created equal, it says men, but they mean humans, are created equal and are endowed by their creator with certain unalienable rights. Among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Is the truth that there is only one race, the human race, made in the image and likeness of God, and the truth that we were created to love God with all our hearts and love our neighbors as ourselves? This is not political, but moral and spiritual, but the positive socio-political outcomes of returning to our Creator and living out this truth, I hope is evident to all. And as citizens, I believe we all should, should take a step back and think about where, where our responsibilities lie, both with our children, my children came to the school, they're doing all right, and where our obligations to our community lie. We are all here together to, to speak about what we believe is the right thing to do in our community. And as you see, a lot of people are really concerned about some stuff going on. So God bless you all, and thank you for letting me babble. Appreciate it.
Susan Carroll is followed by Rich Benema. Susan Carroll? All right. I don't see Susan, but I'll hold her space if she does come forward. I know we're getting later in the evening. Rich, come on up.
Rich Benema, DGES alumni and parent. I came ready with statistics and research to support the in-person plan, but I'll take your lack of discussion as, as agreement and acceptance of that plan. So I just want to take some time to thank Dr. Thiele. I know you and I have gone back and forth for a long time over this last year, and although we never agree, I do understand your commitment to student safety, that you were willing to shut down the schools in order to protect any student from long-term side effects. And so I thank you tonight for your consistency and understanding the potential for long-term side effects from vaccination. I think that that, what was good last year is good for this year, so I just want to thank you for doing that. Really quickly, to save, I know, not a forum, but to save me from sending you an email, one thing in the morning, one thing I saw in the presentation was talking about with the commons, that there might be a full lunch period, and I understand that there will be students that will actually be eating for 50 minutes instead of having a half lunch and half resource.
Correct. That was always the plan when we introduced the master facility plan to the community, to extend the amount of time that students would have in that new common space.
Is that assigned to them, or is it a choice on whether they want a resource or a full lunch period? I don't understand how that works.
We'll be, Rich, we'll communicate that all out from the principal soon, yeah.
Anyway, I just, I know it's, last year and the year before was a total mess, and so I just, here's to a successful 2021, 22. May we make it all the way through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Carolyn, oh no, I'm sorry. Next up is Anthony Chang, followed by Carolyn.
You don't have to say last name. No one can say it.
Googly ammo? I tried.
Thanks for the question.
I told you it'd be bad.
Hello, my name is Anthony Chang. I'm obviously a resident of Downers Grove. I want to thank you for the time at the microphone here. I wanted to echo a comment earlier about Senate Bill 818. I think the responsibility of sexual education, gender identity, all that education belongs firmly with the parents and should not be taught by the schools. I think the, the family unit is the best source of information for that, and that it's the responsibility. Also want to say thank you for giving the opportunity for full lunches. I cannot tell you how often I've been hearing complaints from my kids when they were like, "I don't even have enough time to eat my food, I have to shove it in the garbage or just walk down the hallway and eat it." So, I don't, well, I don't have any kids now at this point, but I just want to say thank you for future students that will be coming through. They will greatly appreciate it, and my kids are going to lament that they didn't get that opportunity. I also do want to say that I'm a little concerned about something that was taught to my daughter in freshman English. She was told to check her white privilege. I mean, obviously, I'm, you know, I don't know. But to be fair, my wife, my wife is Jewish, so she is half-Naff, so there is that split, and it causes a lot of consternation. And I think that this, obviously, is a very divisive and very sensitive issue, and I want to be, I appreciate the fact that you made the opening statement that critical race theory is not going to be taught here, and I really hope that we can follow through. And, you know, like I said, during a freshman English class in a 2016, 2017 year, being told to check your white privilege, you may say that critical race theory is not being taught, but if your teachers are saying that, we know otherwise. So I just want to thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, you can help me with your last name now.
The G silent, so it's Guelmo.
Guelmo.
I've had that name my whole life. Imagine all the teachers who messed it up.
We're good at messing up names.
Yeah.
We try our best to get them right.
So my name is Carolyn Guelmo. I'm a nationally-recognized safety and health practitioner for workplace safety. My mother was instructional aide in Fairfax County Public Schools outside of Washington, DC. I had my education there. My father was an assistant principal at the Science and Tech School in Fairfax County. So I'm very well aware of how school systems and the government works. I'm a former lobbyist that represented three major industries to Congress, and military, and federal and state agencies on safety and health. And I have worked for the CDC investigating firefighter fatality. I have developed videos for the construction industry on respiratory protection. I have worked with agency heads on protecting workers and people for 25 years. Guidelines, which I know, and I know the CDC very well, there's a reason I don't work there. Okay? I know the government very well, and I know the press very well. And when you push paper masks, there is no science on paper masks. I am an expert. I have 20 publications that were peer-reviewed and published by the CDC. Prior to 2019, the CDC and the National Chemical Society published studies on hand sanitizer, which lessens the immune system. They did studies on doctors, and you can find this online, and healthcare professionals. What the government did to this nation is despicable. What they did to the school systems is despicable. They told everybody to spray Lysol and all these cleaning chemicals that cause cancer, that cause all kinds of adverse health effects. In the workplace, in a Lysol manufacturing facility or Clorox, workers are fit-tested under the Occupational Safety and Health Respiratory Protection Standard, which far outweighs CDC guidelines. And in fact, I fought the government at OSHA during the Clinton administration, who tried to push guidelines on the construction industry. They are not peer-reviewed. They are made up by a bunch of government bureaucrats. A lot of people who work in the CDC are academics and have never practiced medicine. This is one of the reasons I left. Now, these poor children-
I'm sorry, you're out of time.
Okay.
Thank you. The last slip I have is for Susan Carroll. Is Susan still in the house? All right. This concludes the reception of visitors.
Thank you all, and thank you again for pretty much sticking with the plan. I very much appreciate it. Will let us get through all of the speakers tonight. Moving on to communicate, that will conclude our reception of visitors, second reception of visitors. Report on legislative education. Paige, Jenny, anything?
We haven't had a meeting since.
No, and they, they've really worked behind the scenes to try to get Illinois to work quickly to release, release the guidance once CDC released theirs. So it was a very pleasant surprise to have a quick decision from IDPH this time.
If I could just ask the audience, we are still meeting and need to hear each other, so if you could just keep it down as you eggs, and I appreciate it. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
It's all right.
SAS, Joanna's not here for a report on SASID. Did you have anything on 99 Foundation? Okay. IASB, Chris, is there anything this year, so far? Yeah. Okay, we have two upcoming board meetings. We will have on August 6th, excuse me? We are still meeting, so I'd appreciate if you'd keep it down. On August 2nd, we're going to have a workshop meeting at 6:30, place to be determined. And August 16th, a regular business meeting at 6:30. Now, we need a motion to go into closed session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony of a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreation, or educational setting, or volunteer of the district or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity.
So moved.
Second.
Terry and Mike.
Thank you.
Terry Pavicich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherelle Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Nancy Kupka.
Aye. We are moving into closed session. We will be returning into open to adjourn, but no action will be taken. So for our students, thank you. You're free to leave.
I will stay, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.